We good to go?
Good to go.
Okay, welcome everyone to the April 13th, 2020 Select Board Meeting. We are participating remotely and because of that I'll be reading some emergency provisions to start. Feel free to zone out. According to RSA 91- A of the emergency provisions, as the Chairperson of the Barrington Select Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously through this meeting, through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Phone participation is under 1-9-2-9-3-3-8-4-4-6-4 and the conference ID is 1-7-6-0-3-6-5-6-1. Video participation can be found by clicking on links bit.ly backslash B-A-R-R-S-B-2-0-0-4-13. Important to note is that going forward, meetings for video participation will be able to be located under those naming properties. Providing public notice of necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams. Phone or video participation is encouraged. Instructions have been provided on the website for the Town of Barrington at www.barrington.nuhampshire.gov. We are providing this mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with any type of access. Should anyone experience problems with access, please call 664-0146 or immediately email the administrator at barrington.nuhampshire.gov. Adjourning the meeting if the public is, well, we would be adjourning the meeting if the public was unable to access the meeting, but I have seen participants already from the public. Please note, all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Once we see a select person, Nap, arrive, we'll be moving in order of a roll call vote beginning with select person Air, select person Bailey, select person Nap, select person, I'm gonna butcher your name Jim, Sakosha?
Hey, that's good.
Is that pretty good? Okay, and then ending with myself even though it's out of alphabetical order. So have we got Andy on yet?
I'm here Tracy.
Okay, very good. So can we quickly do a roll call vote for attendance, beginning with select person Air?
Air is present and there's no one in my studio apartment with me.
Okay, and select person Bailey, are you present?
Select Bailey is present.
Select person Nap, you're present?
I am present.
And select person Sakosha is present?
I am present.
Very good. I'll ask that everyone put their phones on mute in the background. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I don't see Andy's picture.
You'll only see four people at a time, select person Air. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one name and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's see, there are no public hearings. Thank the Lord, because this is a very long agenda. No public hearings scheduled at this time for this meeting. Thank you, Town Administrator MacGyver. I'll move right into appointments. We have, oh, response to the petition warrant article correspondence. I did write something up on this. I want to encourage our townspeople to participate in the most effective way possible with town government. So first of all, I want to thank our board and the town staff. At the same time, I also want to apologize. There's been a lot of extra efforts and time expended in reference to petitioned article mailings and during a time where we were all experiencing a lot of extra work with the pandemic crisis. And so I want to thank all of you that made extra efforts and took extra time. As the Chairperson though, I'd also like to suggest to all town residents that prior to taking on petitioned warrant articles, because I do also believe in true democracy, that you consider allowing for participation through public comments, suggestions, ideas, or our twice monthly meetings, and bring any suggested warrant articles before the Select Board so that we can ensure all of these topics are appropriately discussed, even the ones such as the moral imperatives that were placed by petitioned article and voted on. So we would like to be a part of the democratic process as elected volunteer leaders as well. And I would encourage all townspeople to utilize these methods to bring forward warrant articles. And then I'm just going to read the article correspondence and see if there's any discussion from the Select Board. At the March 23rd, 2020 meeting, the Select Board decided to allow each petitioner of each petitioned warrant article to share the warrant article language and the vote tallies as they chose appropriate. The Select Board felt that the petitioners were best suited to send the letters and share the information that they contained since they were written by various people throughout the town and various political leaders. The Select Board experienced resistance from some of the petitioners when those petitioners were notified of the Board's suggestion. Since the warrant language indicated delivery of the results and within 30 days and petitioners did not take that task on, the Select Board, myself, began the authorization for issuance of letters within 30 day requirement and letters were mailed and received by the 30th day through US mail. We did this in order to focus on some really pressing issues like the global pandemic that are taking up a large amount of all of our personal, private, and professional time. Moving on to 2020 Committee. Any questions, concerns, or comments in reference to our petitioned warrant articles? Very good. Seeing as there were no comments from the Select Board members, moving on to the 2020 Committee Commission and Board appointments. The Select Board is responsible for appointing membership of committees, commissions, and boards. The terms typically expire March 31st. The Select Board has been asked to consider and make appointments as indicated in the Town Administrator's Report in Section B. Any questions, concerns, or comments in reference to the listing?
I do. Dan Air?
Yes, yes, select person Air.
If you read, my appointment with conservation says 23. I think my, I should be 22 and George should be 23. They have George number 10 at 22.
Let me just look real quick.
I think I, 22.
Yep, let me just ask, Town Administrator MacGyver, would it be okay to swap the terms?
So Dan, what are you, which one are you talking about?
If you look at my number five, it says 2023. I believe my term is up in 22. And if you go down to George Bailey on number 10, it says 22. George just got reappointed, it should be a three.
So, yeah, so I understand your question. These are appointments outside of each individual's role as a Select Board member. So these are appointments to the actual Board or Committee or Commission. So your appointment to the Conservation Commission, if you were to not run for reelection in your term or not to continue, you would still be an appointed member of the Conservation Commission. This isn't as your role as a Select Board member. And same thing with George Bailey on the zoning board. Quite frankly, George Bailey's term expired last year and you continue in an appointment until somebody is appointed in your place. So there wasn't any mistake done, but to formalize the process, we don't have an updated oath. So that's why his term is set to expire 2022. Keep the appointment staggered.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I'm assuming TA MacGyver that we need a vote on these.
Yes.
So before, does anyone need to move to non-public at the end of this for any reason based on the listing of 11 appointments? Seeing as we don't need to move to non-public later on, I would ask, is there a Board member who would like to make a motion to accept the 11 appointments as indicated under Section B of the Town Administrator's Report?
Madam Chair, I'll make that appointment, George Bailey.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, Andy Nap.
Very good, thank you. And so roll call vote please, beginning with select person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Jim Sakosha?
You're muted Jim. You need to unmute your mic.
Sakosha, aye, yeah, somebody muted me, they're picking on me.
Sorry about that. And select person Hardikoff or Chairperson Hardikoff, aye. Moving on to...
Tracy, just one second?
Yeah.
I just wanted to jump in. So I was muting a couple of people. There's, there's some sort of background noise. I can probably just hear it because of my headphones. So I've been muting folks and coming back, letting them unmute themselves. So if I do mute you, that's why, until I can figure out who it is. I don't know if somebody has a fan on or something blowing on the microphone, but...
I have a air heater underneath.
Probably my laptop, so the fan's on, so.
Mine is also on Connor.
Just muted Dan, it didn't go away.
Let me try, can I, I'm gonna step out for one quick second, I'll be right back.
Oh, I just, I just muted Andy and it didn't go away.
Did that help at all? Did that help at all?
Andy. One second. All right. There we go. That's better. Tracy, unmute yourself now.
Yep, did that help at all?
It does seem like it's coming from your microphone. I mean, it's not, as long as it's not bothering anybody else, like I said, I probably just hear it more specifically because of the headphones. But if, yeah, if you have something near your microphone.
I do not, so.
Don't worry.
You will hear my dog at some point during this meeting, especially if the UPS driver pulls up.
No worries, all right, so let's continue.
The next step for our meeting is the Select Board Committee Chairs. And I know that I reached out individually to each Select Board member to ask if you were comfortable with your assignments. The assignments were as follows, beginning with myself, Tracy Hardikoff, assignment to the Transfer Station Review Committee and the Advisory Budget Committee. Andy Nap to his role on the Planning Board would continue. His Town Hall Building Committee participation and his Technology Committee participation would continue. George Bailey as a liaison to the Library Trustees, to the Town Hall Building Committee participation, and to the Zoning Board. Where am I at? Oh, Dan Air to the Conservation Commission, Town Lands Committee, and School Board, and Jim Sakosha to the Recreation Commission and Planning Board alternate. Does everyone feel comfortable with those assignments and roles?
Yes.
I do.
Any objections? Fabulous, thank you. The first of two public comments at this time. Public comments are limited to a total of 15 minutes, but also two, three minutes per participant. I'm going to have Town Administrator MacGyver. If someone would like to participate, please let us know. He would click on that person and bring them up in our video feeds.
Okay, so I won't be able to bring people up in your video feed, but certainly if anybody has a public comment, now's the time. Earlier during your discussion, there was a chat that came through from a Matt Town. It said, "Did we get to participate?" Did we get to participate? Or do we get to participate maybe? What he meant, and that was a very lopsided view of what occurred. So I would think if a Mr. Town has a public comment, now would be a good time to offer it.
So is there someone participating?
Hi, my name's Jenna Schoenwald.
Sure, Jenna, three minutes, go right ahead.
Okay, I want to first say that I appreciate all of the work of the Select Board. I know that you guys have a lot on your shoulders and I am attending on behalf of those of us who worked to write one of those petition warrant articles. It was the Back From The Brink Resolution, which was Article Number 20 on the ballot. I just want to thank you for sending it on to our congressional delegation as it was requested. The reason that that was requested is because you are the elected officials of the town. And so I felt and other petitioners I know also felt concerned that it come from the officials of the town. So I'm really just here to say thank you for sending that on, for following up on it, because I didn't feel, I didn't feel it would have the same weight if it came from individual citizens.
Okay, and my comments at the beginning of the meeting were simply that, as opposed to just petitioned articles, we would love to be part of the process when things that are very important to the townspeople come up. So I thank you for your feedback and I hope anything in our future, we all get to work on together.
I definitely heard that and I appreciate that feedback.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
So anybody participating on a computer, if your microphone is muted, click the microphone icon to get rid of the red X. And if you're participating over the phone and you're muted, you're gonna want to press star six and that will unmute yourself. If you have anything to offer, there will also be a second public comment towards the end of the meeting if you're following along on the agenda.
So I'd encourage anyone also, if you're on the video feed, you have the ability to send a quick email message. So if, I'm gonna pause for just a minute and allow people to do that in case they choose to participate. And at the end of about 30 seconds, which I'll time, I'm gonna move past public comments, so. No other email comments coming through Connor?
I don't see anything right now.
So I'm, at this point then, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the review of meeting minutes. Is there anyone that wanted to make a motion for changes? Any, any proposed errors in the meeting minutes? Or is there anyone that would like to propose acceptance?
Madam Chair, I would like to first just ask that in the future, but not on this one here. We number the pages on our, I appreciate that. It's just a corrective criticism and I make a motion to accept the minutes of March 23rd, 2020.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Andy Nap.
Okay, so roll call vote please, beginning with select person Air.
You gotta unmute yourself Dan.
Select person Air?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye.
Mr. Bailey? Just one thing, Mr. Bailey, page numbers are in the top right corner. Would you like to see them somewhere else?
Well, that's correct, they are. First page is never numbered, it's protocol.
Thank you very much, I stand corrected again. Boy, I must be really getting old, thank you.
Yeah, that's okay, thanks for pointing out homework we should be doing though, because I didn't notice them either. Old business, 2020 Select Board Goal Development. The Select Board tasked our Town Administrator with a broad outline of our select goals and asked for an expansion of those goals in detail be presented to us at this meeting for acceptance. Are there any comments, changes, ideas that you have about the 2020 Select Board Goals? And I will, I will read them after the discussion.
I have something, Madam Chair.
Sure.
On Section 2, I would like to change the order of which they're labeled. I would like to see Item A to be 3, Item B to be 1, Item C to be 2. It's just a way that I feel and that's my comments on the other. Other than that, I thought they were exceptionally well-written.
Okay, does anyone have an objection to changing the order of importance on the continue the infrastructure planning and improvement portion? Yeah, no.
I would agree with George on that, especially knowing that we're focused on getting a town hall built and knowing that we do have some infrastructure challenges to overcome that impact, that will wholly impact the town, I think that's also important. Also, also, my suggestion on number one, with monitor and respond appropriately to local impact of COVID-19 pandemic. I don't know if we want to limit it just to the COVID-19 aspect of the pandemic. I realize that is the current pandemic, but in the fall, it could be a COVID-20 pandemic or some other method depending on which version of SARS may reappear in the fall.
Very well, very thoughtful thought.
So would you, select person Nap, would you like that to read, monitor, and respond appropriately and create learning models from the local impact of the COVID-19 pandemic?
Or just, maybe just referencing a pandemic as a whole, not necessarily the specific pandemic?
Okay. Any other set, suggestions, comments, ideas on the 2020 Select Board Goals?
Tracy, do you hear me?
Yep, select person Air, go ahead.
Yes, I agree. I think our whole life in general is gonna change because of this pandemic. So we're gonna have to address, I agree with Andy, different situations is all around. Right now, everything, every day is changing for me, it seems like.
Okay. So the four suggestions that I see is changing Line 1 to monitor and respond appropriately to the local impact of pandemics.
Yes.
Under 2, moving B to A, moving A to C, and moving C to B. And are there any other suggestions, comments, or concerns in reference to the Select Board Goals? Okay, would any, I will read these, just, they are, one is to monitor and respond appropriately to the local impact of pandemics. Two is to continue the infrastructure planning and improvement within our town. And we're going to be moving these so that they read, support the Town Hall Building Committee and Town Administrator through the construction of the new Barrington Town Hall, that we work with the road agent and engineering consultant to develop a 10-year road improvement plan, which can be implemented utilizing the town's regular paving and road improvement budgets. And the third, or C, will be work collaboratively with the Library Trustees to develop a new library proposal that will receive voter support. And when we say that, I think we're all trying to say "and pass." So that would be an exciting undertaking of the Select Board and Library Trustees together to work collaboratively towards that. The goal number three is to develop combined policy manuals and review the schedule of how often that policy manual is reviewed for the town. And four is encourage widespread and complete community participation in the 2020 census. I will quickly weigh in that it becomes extremely important that every Barrington resident participate and have their households participate in the census. All money that comes from the federal government to state, to county, and to local areas is determined based upon the number of people in certain areas. And so participating with the census becomes extremely important in ensuring that any local municipality does not share too much of a burden financially when there are federal funds available. So I will encourage all Barrington residents who are watching tonight to please participate with the census. Is there a motion to accept the 2020 Select Board Goals?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so I heard Andy Nap first and select person Air second. So do we have a first and a second?
I'll make first.
I'll make Air, I'll make second.
Very good. And roll call vote please, beginning with select person Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you. And to our Town Administrator, thank you for the creation of the detailed goals. They were, I think, well-written, thank you.
Thank you. Could we get to staff reports before we continue with old business?
We absolutely can. Do I see those on the agenda and I skipped you?
Yes, it's okay.
Okay, jump in.
Perfect. So most everything is on the agenda. Just two quick things, one, the town report is available as usual. I wanted to make sure the Board was aware of an opportunity through the New Hampshire Municipal Association. It's called the Academy for Good Governance Certificate Program. It's something that they had done a number of years ago and have revamped and restarted for this year in conjunction with Primex. It's a six-course program. All of the courses run from 5 to 7 at night in Concord. They cover a range of topics from June through October. And participants that successfully attend the six meetings will be awarded that Good Governance Certificate. One of the things unique about this program is it's only available to elected leaders. So this will be all fellow Select Board members, City Council members from other communities. So if anybody is interested, sign up just opened. And I imagine it'll remain open until filled or through the June 3rd date for the first meeting. So just for your information about that. I also, as we're at the first meeting in April, I wanted to go over the April work anniversaries. So George Joy, you remember this time last year, we celebrated George's 20th year. And now our police chief has been with the Town of Barrington for 21 years. John Booty has been with the Fire Department for 17 years. Deborah Griffin has been Town Clerk Assistant for nine years. Linda Markowitz, our tax collector, has been here for seven years. Lynn Murphy, our Human Resources Administrator, has been here for seven years. Chris Eldridge in the Fire Department has been here for three years. David Kinnison in the Fire Department has been here for three years. And Kristen Montesano has been a process or library assistant for two years. So certainly thank you for the varied tenure that we have here in April. And like I said, everything else is in the agenda. And if Municipal Office Administrator Cottle is on, she can indicate what you have for signatures electronically or we can address it later if she doesn't have that prepared.
Tiffany?
Yep, I'm here, sorry. Was typing something. For your signature right now, I have 11 abatement approvals and three denials in addition to the payroll manifest and AP manifest. And that's up.
Very good. I did ask, in case you see those coming through a second time for signature, I'm not sure, but I did ask that the dates be corrected on the top of the paperwork. So my apologies if that made extra work for anyone. Now's a good time where we listed anniversaries to also thank all of our town employees. This is a really difficult time. Many people are trying to work while certainly trying to keep, you know, family members well, keep up with, you know, helping our elderly parents with groceries. We, we're all taking on different roles than we've ever taken on before by working either remotely or in staggered manners. Sometimes that creates additional work for many of us. And it doesn't go unnoticed by the Select Board that during this pandemic timeframe that our town is still functioning very efficiently and we're grateful for it.
Air, I have a comment. Air, I have a comment.
Yes.
I am a Yankee, and I will never change my ways and deal with times. I cannot, I'm barely dealing with this computer and stuff, and I will not do electro signature.
That's fine.
Physically mail it in or whatever it takes, but I cannot, I'm more hands-on person. And this deal with life on its own, I choose not to use electronic thing personally.
Well, I think we're safe to say, Select Person Air, if just one person is touching the paperwork and the rest of the Select Board is electronically signing, then the chances of us transferring anything to you will be very minimal. So I respect how you feel. We're on to the 2020 paving contract bid decision. Do you want to talk a little bit about that to TA MacGyver, please?
Yeah, so I'll get started. I'll give our road agent Mark O'Neal an opportunity to unmute his phone. So the town received four bids for the 2020 paving work. All of the information is available on the town's website, linked under the bid section, and also in my Town Administrator Report. In the printed packets the Select Board members have, I included the summary of the pricing. In my report, I'll read, we received a response from Advance Excavating and Paving for a base bid of $584,819.50. A response from Busby Construction Company Incorporated for a base bid of $666,935.60. Response from Pike Industries Incorporated for a base bid of $662,559. And a response from R&amp;D Paving Incorporated for a base bid of $561,905.62. In my report, I indicated that the road agents felt Advance and R&amp;D both submitted reasonable proposals and were capable of doing the work. I also indicated that we included additional specifications in this year's bid package to better protect the town, the town's quality. And at this time, I'll turn it over to the road agent to speak to what he saw as recommendation.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My recommendation for R&amp;D, strictly, strictly based on price, I don't know really much about either one of them, either R&amp;D or Advanced. Like Connor said, they were, they were neck and neck as far as price is concerned. I have no predisposition towards either one of them. So any recommendation that I made was, at this point, really based on price.
Air?
Go ahead, Select Person Air.
I want to make something transparent and understand that everyone knows. I, Daniel, the industrial service, family and friends, we're connected and done work with multiple contractors in the area, state and federal agencies, I have relatives. So I have a conflict any way you look at it. And I have used Advance in the past as a subcontractor and multiple other local contractors. Anything that I do with the town, I have no financial gain from. It's all through my corporation, and I pay taxes on that corporation and myself personally. So there's no personal gain and stuff. And at this time, I would like to make some comments. As I've been a selectman since 2016, Advance, GMI, worked for town, we had no conflict. With R&amp;D, I've made observations on several things with them. I feel, and I can prove all of this, ethics violations. Private, private driveway is company time while they're doing work. As a state, they don't allow, it's an ethics violation. And then tobacco vehicle into Swains Lake with a trailer, oil tools, gain water, to pull up to a private subdivision, coachmen, pump water out of it, have follow line, work and follow lines with a resident, cops were involved with it. And then on Lock Hill, I don't see the $4,000 handwork done there. I sent pictures to the Town Administrator. And then on six observations last year, the DuBois County only agree with one of them, went to green, a puddle and stuff. That has not, still not been addressed. So I feel in the long run, the quality of work and the ethics, we're not saving money with the low bidder over the years. And then there's a, if you look at his report, we can't tie in on 126 because they didn't grade it right and feathered it right. Now we have to wait for the state to pay. There's an instance on Town Plains Road, 125, they did the reclaim and grading. They didn't blend it right and feather it out, and the GMI paved over it. So there is puddling in that thing. The state's aware of that. So basically, we need to be on good terms with the state and town. We have, we are bored of mutual understanding, whatever it is, with them, MOU or something with them. So we better practice what we preach and do good work. That's my two cents on this. And any other select will ask questions for more information, but I don't want to dwell on this. But I feel with new changes that is written up in the bid, it's apples for apples. And we, we have something to go by, and the road agent can enforce it, and DuBois County can enforce it. Because all the contractors have understood it now better than last year. Thank you. I can't hear Tracy.
Yep, Tracy, you're muted. I just unmuted myself. I would just, I'll echo the piece that Dan said about the truck being in the lake because I personally took the photo of it. That's their, R&amp;D's paving truck backed into Swains Lake, which I went and specifically stopped and talked to them about because I had a real problem with that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns from select people in reference to the response for the request for proposal on paving? Do any of the select persons wish to make a motion?
I had to unmute myself. Question for the road agent, have we done work with Busby, Pike, and/or Advance before?
I believe we've done, we have done work with Pike before, before my time.
Yep.
I don't think we have ever done work with Busby.
Yep.
To my knowledge.
Because my view on it is, you know, yeah, Pike is almost a little over, was that 100K more than R&amp;D? Firm believer, you know, you get what you pay for. And obviously, you know, that, that picture was crazy that Andy just showed. That's a huge no-no, big EPA violation. So I would like to advise the Select Board that, you know, keep in mind, we do, get what we pay for, and, you know, Pike is a big business, but, you know, they've been in the business for a long time. And, you know, probably because they do stuff correctly, and they do it proper. And, you know, I don't mind paying for something that costs a little bit more, but something that you're not going to need to go back and fix and have an issue with. That's it.
I know, Jim, you asked about working with Advance. A few years ago, they won the contract and very quickly and efficiently were in town. And if I remember correctly, they did all their shoulder gravel right behind it, which also ended up going really smoothly. I, I remember there was very little gripe that year about it. But beyond that, that's the one experience we've had with them in town.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, Select Person Air.
Advance is set up with a shoulder machine, and Peter contracted them above the brace. But if you look at their proposal, they list all their equipment. They're real neat and professional and stuff. And that's one thing, I think they have a good show when you look at their proposal.
Okay, so is there any?
Because Busby and Pike is pretty tight, though. They're, they're like hand in hand. And, you know, we know, we know Pike's at the top of the game, so.
I think we worked with Pike years back, decades back. I know, I, I, I remember us working with, is it GMI? Is, is that what you stated?
Yes.
Yeah. So at this point, is there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Or would someone like to make a motion in reference to the RFP on paving?
The only comments I have, Madam Chair, is that we spent an awful lot of time last year on Lock Hill trying to get things worked out. We paid extra money to our engineer to come out and try to work with us on that. And, you know, I, I for one can't favor R&amp;D paving. And if anybody else wants to make a motion to, to do something else, then I would be willing to second it.
Okay.
I will not back R&amp;D because of my knowledge.
Would anyone like to make a positive motion towards the acceptance of any of the contractors?
I would, I would like to make a motion to have Pike Industries receive the bid award.
And would anyone second that? I'll ask again, would anyone second that? Seeing as there's no second, the motion does not carry forward. Would anyone like to make a motion in reference to the other two contractors?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Advance for the $584,819.50.
And do we have a second on that?
Sorry, hold on, I'm just review, I'm looking at Pike's and Advance right now. Sorry about that, I'm, I'm.
My thing, my thing is, is if we get into a handicap and we do need an engineer, somebody like Pike, I'm not sure on Advance, and I'm totally open to this. But, you know, we know that Pike has an engineer on staff. There's going to be no outsourcing and extra for that. Because, you know, that's how a lot of these contractors work. We'll go in, we'll bid it low, something comes up, we'll just charge them extra because it's the government, it's the town, and they're going to have to do it regardless. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Can I call on that?
Hang on. Go ahead, Select Person Air.
They don't bring in their own engineers, you have third-party review and stuff. When we use it to protect ourselves and stuff, we have tests and checking their work. So we don't use their engineers to guarantee their own work. We have a third-party review.
Right, the third-party will, will review, but if something comes up and they need something engineered, they have somebody on staff, I would assume, to take care of that.
So we have a motion from Select Person Bailey for acceptance of the contract from Advance. I'm waiting on a second. Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Okay, so now we have a second. So could I have a roll call vote on the acceptance of Advance' contract for $584,819.50, starting with Select Person Air?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Now, Tosh, aye, and Hardikoff, aye. So the motion passes. Thank you. Are we, TA MacGyver, are we discussing recreation facility addition tonight?
Yes, we are.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Select Person Air.
We have a grader that's older and stuff. It's worse and stuff, but I feel the winches are changing and stuff. We're not getting much frost and stuff. There's certain dirt roads and gravel that should be fixed up and stuff. Horn Road was abused by EBSO and stuff, and they pumped it and stuff, they added stuff to it. Ham Road, a new road, whatever you want to call it, or Province down there, that's a cut through. I think if we have the money, have a subcontractor do it. Ask the paving contractors, maybe to blend it, have the road agent find feasibility. I don't see the cost savings for us overwork our equipment and break it down when the, when the contractors have new equipment, heavy equipment. That's my personal feelings.
Is this part of the current RFP that we just voted?
It's additional, there's, there's no money allowed in there.
Okay.
Town Administrator and the road agent to look into it.
Okay, I'm, I, I will list that and we'll potentially bring it up as a discussion under new business. Select Person Air, is that okay?
Yes, Tracy.
Okay. Recreation Facility Edition, who's speaking to that? TA MacGyver?
One second, Chairperson Hardikoff. So I just wanted to speak to Select Person Air's point. So you'll note in my report, and we spoke about it just briefly, the base proposal for the paving projects included Lock Hill Lane, which because we won't be able to do that in the conventional means, we're going to put that off until the state top coats Church Street there. So that will be coming off, and the road agent is already working on what will be adding in. Part of it would be adding material to both Oak Hill and Malago based on the optional alternative that was added. So once we pen a contract with Advance as decided by the board tonight, we'll work with them to develop one change order that takes out Lock Hill, adds in proposals from the road agent, and that'll come before the board. So any future come before the board, any future decisions, changes would come before the board. And so we'll make sure that we can discuss that and explore Select Person Air's proposal.
Connor, there was a note that popped up, I'm just seeing it now, from Rick Walker. It said, Connor, we worked with Pike back in the early 2000s.
Yes, yep, and I received a separate message that there were also quality issues with Pike in the early 2000s.
Okay. So Recreation Facility Edition, are we on to that?
We are, sorry. And I'll speak to that just briefly. This is simply to keep the board informed so you know that we had advertised a request for qualifications for this 1,500-square-foot addition. The town received four responses from Carino Construction, Gruen Construction, Martini Northern LLC, and Ritchie Construction. All of those responses are posted on the town's website. They're also linked to my report. The Recreation Department and Commission are reviewing those, conducting interviews and reference checks, and will be preparing a recommendation to the Select Board for the April 27th meeting. So if you're interested in digging in deeper than just their recommendation, the information's here. And if you have questions, you can certainly contact me or the Recreation Department.
So moving on, would, is Erin on the video meeting? And would she like to speak, speak to our fabulous roadside cleanup day?
I think that's a terrific idea, and yes, she is.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Erin.
How's it going?
Good.
So I just wanted to let you guys know that we are going to be doing the roadside cleanup. I've spoke to Chief about it and to try to get some information from the state to see if we, we're still on, you know, kind of at compliance with still holding the event. We have made some changes where we are going to not have the volunteer lunch. So we're just asking everybody to join us at our annual open house. And the other changes that we've kind of made are how the bags are handed out. I've given the option to residents to either they can still pick them up on Saturday, the 25th, or they can do it earlier and just scheduling a meeting time. And then the second thing is how the filled trash bags would be handled. I've had many residents say that they do not have an issue bringing them to the highway garage because we are keeping it separate from the transfer station. We'll have a clearly marked open-top container, kind of like what we did last year. But if people did not feel comfortable, I asked them to leave them on the side of the road and just let me know, and myself or whoever is there on Saturday will help go around and collect them.
Great. Thank you, Erin. I think we're looking forward to another fabulous day where the town of Barrington looks spiffy and clean. Thank you for coordinating all that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
What to wear and bring, I think that we should add the face mask on there.
I just assumed that that was, everybody was going to do that because of how things were going as it is. But I can note that when I plug it on another Facebook post or on the website as well.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
And I think people will keep appropriate social distance out there on their roadways, I'm sure. Okay, thank you, Erin.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Stormwater Asset Management Grant, RFQ.
Speak up, Dan.
Hey, Tracy, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Select Person Air.
Erin, I'd like to get a picture in the background. And I may, if I'm available, I'll drive around, throw back my dump truck, and then I can dump it at town transfer station.
It's at the highway garage.
Highway garage.
Highway garage. And then it's my understanding, there's a lot of people in the community making cloth masks and stuff right now. They might be available. I can't promise that, but I understand there's people making them.
Excellent. The Stormwater Asset Management, TA MacGyver, who's speaking to this? You're muted.
How's that?
That's fabulous, thank you.
Thank you. So just purely for your information, at the March 23rd meeting, you authorized the advertisement. The request for qualifications was developed. I linked it to my report, so you can review it if you're interested. Responses are due May 6th. Responses are due May 6th, and there'll be, a recommendation will be prepared for the May 11th meeting.
May 11th, very good. And moving on to our COVID-19 Barrington Town Services. I know we have a variety of memos from various departments. Anyone else having trouble with the meeting to do a reboot there, TA?
Seems to be resolved. Can everybody else hear okay?
Yeah, I can, thank you.
Sorry about that, not sure what the issue was. Hopefully that doesn't happen again. So on the town response and town services to COVID-19, simply to make sure the board and the community continue to stay in the loop and up to date. So all of the information. Just got a note from Andy saying he lost the meeting, are you still with us, Andy?
Want to give him a minute to reboot?
I definitely will. It shows that he's still here, but I think he must be needing to rejoin.
Yeah, mine was frozen for a period of time, so.
Mine too, dude, Connor booted it.
I wish I could take credit. I, I literally was doing the same thing all of you were doing, just watching it, waiting for it to come back.
We fed, is this meeting through Atlantic Broadband, is that who we all have?
That's the internet service that I have.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Andy is trying to get back in now, so we'll go ahead and give it a try. And Tiffany and I have been working diligently to try to figure out where that background noise is coming from. The funny thing is, all of the audio was getting jumbled. But guess what I could still hear? I could still hear whatever background noise that was. So I'm trying to point the finger at somebody here, but maybe it is just the coronavirus itself. The ghosts of all the viruses that have been killed by social distancing.
Maybe. Andy, are you back on with us?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
So we, this is just purely for information anyways, so we can check in with Andy to see if he has questions when he comes back. By and large, the town is still operating. A lot of the services offered out of the town hall are by appointment only. Staff are still working to make sure that the services are provided in as seamless a way as possible. And I really appreciate and look forward to passing on your comments, chairperson, regarding the hard work of staff in these times. I think, you know, there's a lot of communities that have shut down their services a lot more than the town of Barrington has. Every community has to make their own decision, but I think it's certainly been important to me from the beginning to make sure that we have some level of continuity of service. In a lot of aspects, we provide various central services to our residents. And as much as we can do to continue to that, I think we need to. And we've done, I think, a very good job doing so. We had a successful planning board meeting last week that, you know, we heard three applications. Over 30 people participated in the meeting, and so progress is continuing. We certainly appreciate the community's support in honoring our social distancing and also dealing with the by appointment only approaches to some of the services that we have. So yeah, I do have some letters linked there. Certainly if board members had any questions about the services we're offering or how we're offering them, I'd be happy to address them, but just for your information and the benefit of the public.
Can you hear me, Connor?
Yes.
Select person, Nap is back, great.
I'm here on my phone, I'm trying to get back in electronically, so bear with me.
Thanks for jumping back on.
You want to jump on to the police department cruiser purchase?
Yeah, if there's no questions from board members, I think that's terrific. And I know Chief Joy, oh, Dan has a question, I see his hand up.
Select person, air, go ahead.
During the budget, and the Budget Committee brought it up too, about the rotation, the mileage, the years and the miles don't add up. And then, there was a preference.
Select person, air, I'm going to ask you to hold those comments until we actually hear about the topic of the actual police cruiser purchase, because I'm not sure that the public has access to understanding what we're talking about yet. Is that okay with you?
Okay.
Okay, go, go ahead, Connor.
Perfect, yeah, so Police Chief George Joy is on the line, prepared a well-worded memo to the board and the community. It's linked to my report and available on the internet on the town's website, indicating his attention with Deputy Chief Brooks to save the town some money and do what's right for the community. So I'll let him come on and speak to that, and we'd be looking for the board's support and to move in this direction if there weren't any other questions or concerns.
Police Chief Joy, you there?
Star six to unmute yourself. Yep, there he is.
It said I'm no longer muted.
Very good.
You aren't.
So during the course of the budget process, as we know, line item 4752, the police department was budgeted $33,000 for a cruiser purchase. Based on some aspects out of our control, we weren't able to purchase a new Dodge Charger as was our plan this year. So instead, we went ahead and we looked at ordering, and I did in fact put in an order, for a new Ford Explorer, cost of $33,007. And that is unoutfitted, nothing complete on that. So the base price of the Explorer was $33,007. We then obtained a bid to outfit that Explorer, which would have been approximately $9,087. So working on base numbers, we're talking a total right there of $42,094. With everything that's come up with the pandemic, the Deputy Chief and I were already looking at ways next year to save some money. Through the course of that process, the Deputy Chief located a fleet service from the Missouri Highway Patrol. Missouri Highway Patrol rotates the cruisers out of their fleet right around 50,000, 55,000 miles. Am I going too fast or am I tracking okay so far?
You're doing fine.
Okay, so they rotate their fleet at about 55K. Deputy Chief reached out, made contact. They actually had several vehicles on their lot matching the silver of the Barrington fleet, which I know is important to some folks. Seventeens and eighteens. The one we looked at in particular was a 17, and it, I lost my place here. We were looking at a cost of about 17, I lost my place. With the light bar, I'm sorry, that's why my numbers were off. With the light bar, it's going to be 18,850. That breaks down to an extra $900 for the light bar and the siren box. So for 18,850, we are into the Dodge Charger as we have now, the V8, all-wheel-drive with the siren and the light bar. Now, you guys don't have the quote in front of you for an outfitting. I'll let you know that a new light bar alone for the Explorer was running about $3,600. So, again, light bar, siren box, 18,850. Shipping is going to cost us less than $1,000. The current quote we're working with is about 825. So the total to get that cruiser here is going to be about $19,675 versus, let's just go with the base price of the Explorer, 33,000. Now, that all said, we could continue with the ordered Explorer, and we have no idea when we are going to see that. Currently, people are being told anywhere from late fall to early winter for cruisers that have been ordered. Factories are obviously shut down, there's a number of other factors. If you folks give me permission to waive the standard procurement bid process, we'll have our cruiser here, God honestly, by the end of the month probably, if not early May, ready to get outfitted and on the road. So again, just looking to get the bid process waived, because I'm not sure where I'm going to find two other bids for used Dodge Charger cruisers with approximately 55,000 miles on them.
Thank you, Chief Joy. Select person questions, select person, air.
If you look at the information provided in the letter from Chief Joy, all the data is right in there, that he talked about, all the numbers.
Yep.
My question for him is, I understand problems we're going to have with getting vehicles, the cars. But will this, it's the questions from the last budget about cars, years and miles for rotation and stuff. Is this going to suit or is this not the idle car, only for certain?
Nope, this is going to suit unit four, which I don't have the year in front of me, I apologize. Unit four is one of the older sedans with the highest mileage in the fleet. That will be rotated out to make room for this Charger.
For some reason, Chief Joy, I think that particular unit was like at 119,000 miles or so, is that correct?
Yeah, it's actually currently sitting right around 122,000. The Deputy Chief just handed that off to me, so we're in 122-ish.
I remember that from the detailed report that you gave us last time. So I do have one question. So this is 59% of the cost of a new Cruiser, a new Charger. I'm curious how long we think with, with this amount of miles on it, how long will it last us? In other words, have we taken, you know, it's 59% of a new one? Are we going to get 59% of a life cycle out of it?
So this is an experiment for us, and the only thing I can tell you is based on the research we've done, the answer is going to be yes. Deputy Chief actually reached out to an agency in Mississippi, spoke to their fleet manager. They bought more than 200 vehicles from the Missouri Highway Patrol. Over the last decade, that individual from Mississippi figured they saved over a million dollars, and he was quick to say that they'd had trouble with none of them. He said if the Missouri Highway Patrol is getting rid of it, you're going to be in good shape. I have a friend who just retired from law enforcement in Missouri. He happens to live not far from fleet headquarters. He said that the Missouri Highway Patrol has a very strict policy of routinely inspecting their cruisers and a very strict maintenance policy as well. And he said the same, Missouri Highway Patrol, it's going to be a well-cared-for vehicle.
Okay, thank you, select person, air.
I, vehicles are made to go more than 100,000 miles today. My Dodge is an old eight, it's got 222,000 miles on it. A lot of original parts still in the, on it, motor and stuff, you do oil changes. My Ford just earned 100,000 miles. And then, I'm going to mention later on, when the new truck purchase comes on, I'll motion this for the purchase of it, to waive the policy. Because what's going on in this country today, this epidemic and all this stuff, I agree with what's happening. It's a thing forever to get vehicles.
Very good, are there any other questions or comments from select board members?
General question, I, I'm trying to remember what we were running around miles per year on cars. And I, I know some of them were, were fairly low, like in the teens and the twenties, which were more the private cars. But I think the cruisers that were in rotation, in some cases, were running upwards of around 40,000 miles a year. Is that accurate, Chief Joy?
I'd want to do the math again, but that sounds low on some ends and high. Again, we've got the current Dodge Charger, and if you give me, if you'll bear with me for 30 seconds. The Dodge Charger is the newest of the cruisers in the fleet, obviously bought last year. And of course, now my computer's going to decide to be slow. What I'm looking for, folks, is to get my current mileage in here. And if you'll bear with me for a second. I have it, but it's in email form. So as it stands now, the Charger, well, as it stood January, the Charger was looking at 13,575. That's gone up quite a bit, because again, we only have the single Charger and it's getting some use. Currently, the Charger has about 26,000 miles on it. The Charger's being ridden pretty much around the clock. The guys go from day shift to night shift. By adding another Charger to the fleet, I'm going to save that car some mileage, because I'm now going to have two cars to distribute it out across. Again, I've got a pretty decent working graph of cost per mile and mileage. I just don't have it at my fingertips for you tonight.
So, I, sorry, I just went back in my email when I pulled up the fleet cruiser list from last year. Unit two was a 2013 Taurus with 90,000 on it. Unit four was a 2013 Taurus with 120,000. So in a year, it looks like we only put 2,000 miles on that car. Unit six was a-
Was that unit four, Andy?
Yes, unit four.
So unit four got limited mileage last year, primarily because that Cruiser became a detail car, not in the best shape, so we took it off from the patrol line and made it the detail vehicle.
Which makes sense, it's the oldest car in the fleet. Unit six was a, is a 2017 Taurus that last year had 44,000 on it. The K9 car was a 15 Explorer with 90,000.
That's centered about 97 right now.
The Ghost car was a 15 Explorer with 97,000. Unit seven was a 16 Explorer with 93,000. Then unit three was a 17 Explorer with 86. And then, unit eight, which was the 19 Charger at the time, had 3,700.
Yeah, those again, sound accurate from back then, that, that Dodge Charger alone is up to 26,000 already.
So, does anyone have any further questions, concerns, comments? Or would anyone like to make a motion to allow for the bid process to be waived based on Chief Joy's recommendations?
Air.
Select person, air.
First motion I would make to waive the bid on information provided in a letter given to me with all the details and numbers. I agree with his proposal here is-
So you're making a motion to allow for the bid process to be waived?
Yeah.
Is anyone seconding that?
I'll second.
I, I heard two voices.
Doesn't matter.
Go ahead. Sukosh has seconds.
Okay, so Jim has, select person Sukosh seconded the bid process waiving. So can we do a roll call vote, please, beginning with select person, air?
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sukosh, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Chief. Onto new business, did you want to discuss any of that, TA MacGyver?
I just wanted to offer sincere thanks to both Chief Joy and Deputy Chief Brooks. I sent out a note to department heads a few weeks ago indicating that we ought to be paying a special, a special close attention to budget utilization this year and starting to think about next year's budget. And I was thrilled when they came to me with their proposal of taking a different tack, certainly the, not the most immediate route. And I appreciate the board's support in being able to secure that piece of equipment that way. And I think it's in the best interest of the town. So thank you to the board and thank you to the police department leadership.
I think a 41% reduction in the cost of, you know, bringing a new vehicle on is, is an excellent, given what we're going to be up against next year. And I'll apologize, there goes the puppy.
Tracy, when you're in your 41%, did you run it off the base number? Did you run it off the number including outfitting it with the necessary equipment?
I used the 19,000 figure, including the shipping, and divided it by the 33.
Yeah, so your, your number, just so you know, is actually a bit low because when you factor in all of the outfitting that the car's already come prepared with, I think you're going to see it's probably closer to 50, a full 50-plus percent.
Excellent. Saving money right now seems like a very wise choice.
Absolutely.
TA MacGyver, did you want to speak to new business?
Yeah, so the next item on the agenda is property taxes. So very publicly, and I included a printed copy in your packet and a link to copy to the report of the governor's emergency order number 25. So very publicly, the governor stood at the podium and said, hey, So very publicly, the governor stood at the podium and said, hey, towns can go and waive everybody's interest in penalties. And, uh, the immediate feedback from attorneys everywhere was, hey, governing bodies have had this authority already. Governing bodies can review abatements and process abatements appropriately. So, uh, you know, this is an easy thing for the governor's office to say, hey, we're, we're doing, we're laying the groundwork for relief at the local level for property taxes. Uh, really what it has done is put the pressure on local communities to do something about property taxes that's within their control. So nothing really changed with executive order 25 as it stands right now. Uh, it may be, um, there may be revisions that, that provide adjustments. But basically, the idea is for folks that are, when the first half tax bill comes due in July, and if folks can't make ends meet and have trouble making that payment, the idea was to allow the interest in penalties that would accrue on that, what passed the due date, allows select boards to issue an abatement for that additional interest, essentially removing, temporarily removing the penalty for a late payment. In reality, most property tax payments are made through an escrow account that are held by the bank. So the vast majority of property tax revenue comes directly from banks where in a blanket fashion delaying the deadline would only allow the banks to hold on to the, the property tax, um, funds for longer. So conventional wisdom across a lot of communities in the state is to continue status quo. That's certainly my recommendation and the recommendation of the tax collector. The select board can still consider hardship abatements for anybody that's fallen on hard times and is, is finding it difficult to pay their taxes. They can make a request to have an abatement of their interest. Uh, additionally, uh, we've recommended to the board, right now at the administrative level, uh, the tax collector can waive interest in penalties up to $5. The intent is so that if somebody comes in to pay their taxes and their check is off because they calculated the interest wrong by a couple of dollars, she can get it processed without having to go to the board. Um, we've recommended that at the administrative level during the state of emergency only, that level goes to $25 so that myself in conjunction with the tax collector can review a hardship situation and issue an abatement of $25 without bothering the board. Uh, if somebody made a request to waive interest in excess of $25, that would go to the board. Uh, and if anybody asked for an abatement after the state of emergency was over of more than, um, $5, we would come back to you. So, um, that's the only proposal on property taxes. We can certainly, on the interest penalty portion of property taxes, we can certainly continue to monitor it and review it. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions or entertain a motion for $5 to $25 on the administrative waiver.
So I'm just gonna, um, I'm, I'm going to make a comment as a select person and, you know, we're in the great unknown right now. And I think what I'd like to see is let's go through the process of issuing the tax bills and see what outcomes look like. And then at, at the potential meeting immediately following when those are due, we would know impact and be able to make a much more educated decision about how we should proceed for, you know, the sake of the town and its, and its residents. That's my own personal opinion. Select person air, you had your hand up.
I personally, it's up bail taxes and right now I'm at 4250 a day. And then I agree, we continue what we're doing. Someone has a hardship, well, might have to form a, takes more time to look at it. I don't think we should, um, there's death in taxes, I guarantee in life.
Thank you. Any other comments from the select board on this? Is everyone comfortable waiting and doing a review on this again at the July meeting?
Bailey, aye.
Yeah. So I think, you know, we don't need to vote on that, but consensus is nice. So thank you all for weighing in. Um, on to highway department bid advertisements.
One more item under, uh, the property taxes, the tax lien and tax deed process. Um, so again, the majority of this conversation on property taxes is just so select board members are informed, these are going to be things that residents talk to you about, especially when the governor stands up at the podium and talks about them. So, uh, local control is protected. So these are all still opportunities for local control. So on the tax lien and tax deed process, one thing that the governor has done is, um, issued a moratorium on evictions. And that includes tax dealing property. It just lasts through the length of the state of emergency, um, which our deed date is all the way out at the end of August, which I would hope the state of emergency would be over for. But the, what I've included in your, in my report is the tax lien and tax deed process timeline. And I, I want to explain why the recommendation is to leave that timeline 100% alone. So this timeline has ramifications years in the future because the, a property isn't eligible for deeding until a lien is two years old. And so if we start moving these timelines where the, the impact of that will be felt in future years. So the select board will still have the authority to abate interest. The select board will still have the authority to issue deed waivers. Uh, myself and the tax collector recommend leaving this schedule as it is. It's important the select board knows that schedule. February 10th, delinquency letters, May 11th, impending lien letters, June 18th, execution of the lien, converting, converting that past due taxes into a lien issued on the property. July 20th, the impending deed letters, and August 27th, the deed date. Which again, the select board can issue as many deed waivers as you want. The town of Barrington doesn't have to deed any properties this year. But it's important that we go through the process to protect the town based on the decisions the select board wants to make. So again, you'll have questions about this. We can continue the conversation, but I wanted to make sure you had that information available.
Okay, um, highway department bid advertisements.
Okay, so I know Mark's still on the call. I'll let him unmute himself. Looks like he is. We have three items that we'd like to, uh, get advertised for the highway department, um, and with, uh, with increasing dollar figures. So, uh, the first one's winter sand. The second one's road striping and the third one is a six wheel dump, dump truck. In my report, you'll see the funding source and available, uh, either budget or capital reserve money for each one of those. The specific budget line it's set to come from and a link to the proposed, uh, the, um, what is proposed to be advertised. Um, so I'll let Mark speak briefly. We can start with, uh, winter sand.
Okay, with the winter sand, um, last year, we took delivery of 4,000 yards of sand. This winter, we only used probably 2,000 yards of that 4,000. Um, and, you know, the, to the untrained observer, they'd say, well, we didn't get much snow this winter, so why would we, why would we, you know, use so much sand? Well, while it was a, a light snowfall year, it was a relatively heavy treatment year. Uh, a lot of ice events, a lot of protracted snow events, um, double barrel storms. Um, and your gravel roads, for the percentage of gravel roads that we have, they probably use half the sand that we, uh, that we put out this winter. Those things just freeze up ridiculously fast and ridiculously often. Uh, so that's, I would say half of your winter sand goes on our gravel roads. So I feel we have to, uh, get that pile plumped back up to where it was. Uh, just for the mere fact of, um, having that high head wall of sand to pick out of. Because if we get a real, real cold winter and you end up with a one foot to two foot layer of frozen sand on that pile, you want that big embankment, that big head wall to be able to pick out of, uh, because you're gonna be with, with that much frost in it, you're gonna be wasting a lot trying to get some that's usable. So that's why I, I would like to keep that pile basically as high as we can get it. Given the, the economic circumstances this year, you can probably come close to, uh, getting what you paid last year, which was $14 a yard, uh, delivered. Um, you can probably come close to that with the economic climate the way it is.
I have a question.
Tracy, unmute yourself.
I have noise in the background. I was trying to be polite. Um, there were two select people with their hands up, I think. Uh, Jim Secoshia, go ahead.
Is, is our pile, I haven't got to, uh, take my special town tour yet with Connor, but is our, um, pile, is that covered by a tarp or such things like that?
No, it's way too big to be covered by a tarp. It's just out in the open air.
Yeah, so it couldn't be multiple ways down, kinda like how they do the salt down in Portsmouth?
No, it pretty much is what it is.
So the salt is covered, Jim. Um, this, we have a salt shed with, uh, multiple bays that we cycle our salt through, um, to keep it covered and protected from the elements, but the, the salt is, that pile's next to it, um, and not covered.
Um, was select person air have a comment or select person Bailey? I don't have you on my screen, but I thought someone else had a comment.
I did air.
Go ahead, select person air.
Um, yeah, people wake up at seven in the morning, six in the morning and stuff, after a storm, all my, I do all my better ones up. Are these icy storms? I chase the storm in the highway of the state. We chase it for two, three days. But we're out in the middle of the night, so people don't see us. The one storm was last like three days and when they go, they don't see us out there, but we've already been out. And sand's not gonna get cheaper. It will be, it was good to have a stockpile and stuff and have it on call. And then that's why I think we should upgrade some of the dirt roads I mentioned earlier.
Okay.
Are you looking for an additional 2,000 yards to bring it up to that 4,000 that you originally ordered last year?
It's to replace what we used this winter, which was about 2,000 yards.
So select, uh, persons, these three, um, proposals, I think that Mark is just looking for our consensus to be able to send them out. Um, I, do we need a motion on that, um, TA McGyver?
As long as there's no objection, I don't need a motion.
Okay, is there any objection to allowing Mark to send the three, um, requests out for proposal for winter sand, road striping, or the six wheel dump truck? Any, any, okay, I, select person air, go ahead.
I think we're gonna have the same problem with getting the trucks built and stuff and timeframe, everything going on. And then I think we should send up, cap, drive these specs, everything we want. But give the road agent opportunity, someone comes in when we're already built. If it comes close to our specs, then we're gonna go with that because we could wait a year. That's, that's what we're waiting last time here for our vehicle to be built. So I think it'd be a year or two to get one built.
Okay.
We have to weigh that, have that in mind, but you'll find that out.
So is there any, any objection to sending out the three bids? Can I, I guess I'll just ask for a roll call vote that you're comfortable with this, beginning with select person air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Napa, aye.
Secoshia.
And Hardikoff, aye. So I think the RFPs can go out. Thank you so much for your hard work on those.
Thank you. Terrific.
Recreation Jim project approvals.
Um, so Chairperson Hardikoff, I think I just mentioned two things quickly.
Yeah.
One on the road striping. I wanted to, uh, make sure the board was aware. Um, we've added a number of stop bars at the recommendation of the road agent. A lot, a lot more of our roads are traveled heavier than they have been, um, in years past. It's the road agent's recommendation. I 100% support him to add a number of stop bars throughout town where there haven't been them previously. That's included in the proposal. So I want to make sure you were aware of that. The budget is available. Um, so there's money available to do so, but I wanted to make sure you were aware. Additionally, with the dump truck, um, you'll remember that the road agent went through a thoughtful process last year to figure out what we should cycle through for our equipment. Uh, we'll certainly be in a situation to, um, wait and see what we get for a response back for the bid package we put out. We'll have to make the best decision we can at that time. The, uh, we're also exploring alternative grant and funding opportunities for decommissioning one of our pre-emission diesel trucks, uh, which may provide some, uh, an additional funding source. So we'll keep you posted on those efforts, but thank you for your support to advertise those. Uh, and I'll make sure to get a link out to you when they're advertised on the website.
And, and just so everybody knows, with regards to the, to the striping, uh, we currently have, uh, 48 stop bars in town. Um, I went around to each road that basically exited out onto one of our busier roads. And we can, we can use in the vicinity of about 69 more of those stock bars, stop bars for a total of 117. So, um, I might be able to shave a few of them here and there, but the majority of them are, are really quite needed.
Tracy, I have a general comment if you don't mind.
Go ahead, select person now.
But my general comment is we are a rural community. Um, that, that is one thing I always squawked about with all the line striping as well as a rural community. Like, I understand there is a purpose for it in many cases, but as a rural community, um, I expect that we don't have all the same niceties, uh, as every other, um, more urban area than here. So, uh, as much as I support, uh, the proposal, I ask that we definitely take a hard look at this and determine the real necessity around stop bars coming out into, uh, some of these roads.
Thank you for your comments. Um, Recreation Jim project approvals.
Awesome. So I know, I see that I have, um, the Recreation Director and the Assistant Recreation Director, Jesse Tennis and Sarah Bailey on. Give them an opportunity to unmute their microphones so they can participate in the conversation. So, uh, as you know, the Recreation Department and Commission is hard at work, um, and has been. Uh, this is a very busy time for them, even given the, the canceled programs. They're taking advantage of this opportunity to pursue a lot of ongoing projects that, um, have been taken, uh, that have taken a back burner in years past. So obviously we talked about earlier, they're working on the request for qualifications for that addition. That's certainly the biggest thing that they're pursuing, but they're focusing on the smaller projects also. Uh, two that have been on the list for a long time is taking care of replacing the gym floor. That's a rubberized, uh, system that, that gets installed that, um, is beyond repair and needs to be replaced. They love what they have. They want to replace it in kind. Um, additionally, the gym walls, adding some additional, um, barriers, improving the electric and improving the, the, and repainting, um, to, to really bring that up to where, um, they'd like it to be. Um, both of these projects will be funded out of the revolving fund. Um, the rec commission and rec department went through a thoughtful process of receiving quotes for each of these projects. I sent those out, uh, to board members. And so what we're looking for, um, is the board's support to pursue these projects as the owners of the building and the board's support to pursue the selection process that the Recreation, uh, Department and Commission went through, uh, to arrive at these proposals for Dynamic Sports Construction and Martini Northern. And, uh, Chairperson Hardikoff, before we go to board members, I just want to make sure if, uh, the director or assistant director, I would like to chime in, that'd be a great time.
Connor, I think that's great. I think you covered it. Um, the, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the floor is just gonna be resurfaced. So we're actually gonna be keeping the current rubber floor that's on there. There are a few spots that will have to be kind of spot treated just depending on the, you know, how much use they got. Um, but the floor will just have about a two inch re, re rubber surface that will go right over the top of it. Um, and it should take about a week to two to kind of complete the process from beginning to end.
Any, any other questions? Yeah, any other questions from the select board in reference to these? I've been lucky enough to be the liaison to the rec commission and have watched a very thoughtful process unfold in how they approached this. And I, I personally loved the idea that even in a time of crisis, there was opportunity to get certain things done that then decrease disruption in the future to townspeople. And I just, I thought that was a genius approach to things, by the way. Any questions, comments, concerns from the select board?
Dan had his hand up first.
Okay, I can't see Dan. So go ahead, Dan.
Um, yeah, on the walls, are there gonna be any exterior walls and R value added to it? The whole building needs a R value in heating system upgrade.
Um, the, the details of the build, I think, um, the, pardon me, Recreation Commission has oversight of. But I'm quite certain that in reference to the insulation that they will be using, um, that I recall one of the rec commission members understands code far better than I ever will and that I'm quite certain that it will be done to the appropriate code. Um, select person Bailey, you had a question?
I do. On that, uh, new, uh, floor and they're putting in it, it was stated it's gonna be, uh, two inches approximately. Is that gonna have any effect with our two entrances, uh, from the outside and the entrance from the storage room and the office? Is that gonna? Is that gonna cause a trip hazard or is it gonna cause a hazard for a wheelchair to maybe come in from the two outside? That's my only concern.
Why don't we let our Rec Director, Jesse, weigh in on that?
Thank you.
I apologize, George. I misspoke, so it's not actually two inches, it's two millimeters. And they have...
I draw my question.
Yeah, but they do, I actually asked that question because we have a couple of floors, holes within the floor. And they have a washer system. They actually will raise all of those for us and that will be included in the installation process.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yep, sorry about that.
Is, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns in reference to the gym floor and walls projects? And if there are not, is there a select person that would like to make a motion to consider approving the gym floor and gym walls?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Any sec, and select person Air has seconded it. Could I have a roll call vote, beginning with select person Air, please?
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Napp, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all for that. Onward we go, Rec Department. Thank you for, for really thinking about this in, in a time where it's available to get projects done. Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership Grant. TA McGyver, are you there?
Yes.
Did you want to speak to that?
So it's the board's policy and practice to approve the pursuit of grant opportunities prior, just to make sure that, since the Select Board will be the one asked to accept the grant if awarded, a check before it goes out to make sure the board's comfortable with the grant. This specific grant is to reimburse some of the costs from the goodwill expansion through the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership Grant. There is a, there are matching funds required, which have already been paid. So this would simply be to reimburse, I think the anticipated amount would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000. So looking for board support to pursue this grant opportunity on behalf of John Wallace.
Thank you. Select person Bailey?
Thank you very much. I have a question. Has this already been approved by the, for the, for the grant? Has the Great Bay Resources approved this grant?
Um, Air?
No.
Well, if that's the case, then the, this grant expired April 10th of this year. So why, and that's my question.
Do we have someone who can weigh in on that?
Air, select person Air. I didn't make it to the last meeting of the select persons, but all the paperwork was filed, everything was done. My understanding is, so I'll make the motion for them. The paperwork was done. I have emails to verify it.
But, but the prob, the problem I have with this, Madam Chair, is that the filing date expired on April 10th of this year. I double-checked it today when I went in. And if it's not, if we don't have an approved reply back from Great Bay, and then there's nothing there for them to do, because there is no mention of any applications for 2021. I went far to look at that too, so there isn't any applications. They've stopped at that date and for what reason, I don't know. But I, I, enough said.
So is there a chance that even the pandemic, that the deadline got maybe expanded? A select person Air has a comment.
It's my understanding, all the paperwork was filed before Friday at midnight.
So prior, prior to the pursuit of the grant approval through the Select Board, it was already filed?
No, Conservation did it. They already worked on it. Now, they're, they're starting their eyes to get the approvals. We do get it, the grants.
Is there anyone from the Conservation Commission on this call?
I don't think so.
Not that I say.
So I, I, I see, I see, um, select person Bailey's point, which is so better to ask for forgiveness than permission, it seems. Should we? It seems to me over $3,000, we likely would have approved this. If there isn't a reason for us to approve the pursuit of this, does anyone want to speak to our reason that we should not?
Well, as I said, i- if, if what Selectman Air is saying, and I don't doubt, doubt him 100 at all, we're asking to, you know, like you said, forgive and forgiveness. So, I, I, I don't like that. It seems to be a habit of some individuals. And so I, I, I do have an objection to it, Madam Chair.
Okay. So one of the things, in reference to this, so some ways that we could pursue this. We could certainly go ahead with the approval for the grant to be submitted, since I think it already has. And we could also caution the Commission that going forward, we would appreciate being able to do our job effectively first, before the submissions take place. And that could come as a written letter from the Select Board.
Madam Chair, as you may recall, when Mr. Napp was Chair, we still had that same discussion as to letting us know what was going on prior to and not asking forgiveness again. So, th- this is just another incident in a long line of items, as far as I'm concerned. So what you're asking, I would, I have objections to, but I'm only one person.
I, ma-
Select person Napp, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I agree with what George is saying, however, I'm not one to be a gift horse and look free money in the mouth. So, my take on it is, is that we move forward and, and apply with it. We also were looking at amending and as, when I was Chair, we had talked about meeting with the Conservation Commission to review the MOU as well as stress some guidance around the work that they're doing for the town and how they perform that work. So it, I think something strongly worded to the effect that their lack of timeliness will result in us not supporting these decisions moving forward. And this is at least the second, if not more than that times that we have been brought into the loop already behind the eight ball.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't disagree with how, how you're viewing it. I think one of the things that occurs to me is oftentimes, and we know this because we're all elected volunteers, essentially. One of the things that often happens with volunteer roles is it becomes difficult. I think we could probably assume in this timeframe where there's a lot of what I'll call chaos and change taking place with the pandemic and how people communicate and so on and so forth. I, for one, would choose to be a little forgiving in this case and send a letter, but still approve this going through, if there is consensus from the board on that.
Well, Madam Chair, I would, I would consider an approval if we approved, if, if the motion were to include, whoever makes the motion, to include the fact that they can go ahead and apply. And then we will have the discussion as to match if, if they should be so selected for that. I think we should go that far with it.
Okay.
It's just, you know, past practice hasn't been on our side.
Okay, so select person Napp, you had a comment?
Yep, I, I mean, based on the way I'm reading this, and correct me if I'm wrong, they've already applied, it would just mean the difference on us accepting the funds or not if it got approved, because the application has already been submitted prior to the deadline.
It's a matching fund grant.
Right, I agree, George, but what I'm saying is they have already submitted on our be, on the town's behalf. It just been approved by the board before the submittal.
I understand.
Select person Air, you had a comment?
No, everything that you talk about is correct. There's everything that's done last minute on the tent. I have emails to verify it.
Okay, so we're really, we're at a crossroads here. So, do we want to put forward a motion to approve the grant and a letter sent to the, to the Conservation Commission?
I'll make-
Also include, as Mr. Napp has said, the MOU to be discussed.
Okay, so the motion then would be, would someone like to make a motion to consider authorizing the pursuit of a grant? And in conjunction with that, a review of the MOU at the next time of signing and a letter to the Conservation Commission asking for more timely work so that the Select Board can do their job.
So stated, air.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and a roll call vote, beginning with select person Air, please.
Air, aye.
With reluctance, Bailey, aye.
Napp, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all.
If I may, just offer a process improvement. So I think the intent of that practice from the Select Board is, is certainly to make sure that folks in town aren't just pursuing grant opportunities that have undue obligations to the town. And that's a pretty quick check to do, that's a pretty quick check and balance to make sure is performed. I think, like, select person Napp said earlier on, looking at gift horse in the mouth or looking at a citizen volunteer that's interested in pursuing a grant opportunity. I might propose that in the future, the board consider either the town administrator or the town administrator in consultation with the Select Board Chair would have the ability to vet a grant submission in the 11th hour, should an opportunity to arise. I wouldn't want to discourage folks from pursuing grant opportunities in the last minute for not being able to make, make a bi-weekly Select Board meeting. So just food for thought, doesn't have to be decided tonight. But I think it is a tough thing, because there, there is a history of the Conservation Commission. But I think pursuing grants is something that we all support. And making sure there's, there isn't obligations is important. But I think those duties might be able to be carried out either by the town administrator or the town administrator and Select Board Chair.
Madam Chair?
Go, go ahead, select person Bailey.
Along with what the TA just got through saying is that maybe we should find a way that we, or he includes in his package, or we have another way that's presented to us, the minutes of the meetings, the, for the months, we can turn around and review the minutes. And that way there, we can still be apprised of everything that's going on. Right now, it's dependent upon us to go look, and by the time we get to the meeting, it's, it's our shucks, I forgot to turn around and read the minutes. Just something like that could help.
Okay, very good. Thank you all for your input on this. Well, I, I think it's important. I think for process, you know, I think it's important. The 300th anniversary ornament purchase, I was really excited to read about this, because I happen to collect New Hampshire pewter ornaments. So, it seemed like a fine idea to me, but is there anyone else from the Select Board that would like to weigh in on the approval of the expenditure for $2,000 to order the Barrington? I think it's our seal that's going on there, correct?
I'll make a motion.
I will-
We'll prove it.
Hang on, I, TA-
Just to be clear, I, I don't, I don't believe it'll, it'll be just the seal. Typically with Hampshire Pewter, they have an artist that works with you to, to design a mutually approved upon design. And I know Chief Walker of the Tri-City Steering Committee is here, if he wants to add anything else.
If I may, the design hasn't been done yet. We're just, the reason we're asking right now is because Hampshire Pewter has a deal where we save about 20% right now by ordering before the end of April. So if we give them a 50% deposit down, that keeps, that seals the price for them, and that'll give us some time to design, get the ornament designed and ordered.
Exciting, okay. So I would make the motion to approve the expenditure, and would anyone like to second it?
Madam Chair, motion.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry, select person Bailey made the motion, I'll second it.
Thank you, Madam.
And let's do a roll call vote, okay. Air, Bailey, got you, we're on to Napp, please.
Napp, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. When I can't see all the Select Board members, I have no idea who's talking, sorry. Electronic signatures, and I assume that this requires us to read this and then vote on it. Am I correct, TA McGyver?
No.
You are, okay. Is it just we want to state to the public that we'll be using this methodology? Okay, would you like to speak to that, please? And I'm gonna disappear for a quick second.
Absolutely. So, a very important aspect of government business is the, not only the Select Board, but other governing bodies, boards and commissions signing off specifically on expenditures, but other authorizing documents. The governor recognizes the impact of the social distancing requirements on accomplishing those tasks and has allowed through Executive Order Number 23, the ability for, for municipal operations to utilize electronic signatures. So, this is, at this point, this is temporary and may not continue after the state of emergency is over. We are using this system of electronic signatures in the meantime. The, there's a federal law, Public Law 106-229, which governs the requirements of those electronic signatures. All of the leading platform offerings are compliant with that. Right now, the town is using DocuSign. I want to thank Municipal Office Administrator Cottle for reviewing the options available and making that recommendation. So, we will be producing electronically signed documents for the foreseeable future. I know earlier in the meeting, select person Air indicated that he won't be participating in executing documents that way. Typically, we just need a quorum of the board to sign. There are some documents, we will, we will still need a physical signature on, typically by the chair. And I'll work in conjunction with the chair to make that happen. But the, right now, we're using it for accounts payable manifest, payroll manifest minutes, and all other documents as appropriate. And we're expanding that use throughout the town operations. So FYI to the community, and be happy to answer any questions from the board of the process if you have any.
Air does.
Select person Air, go ahead.
On number four, Select Board will use electronic signatures to account payable manifest. I believe we don't need to be doing our manifest every two weeks, every, I think we should do it every two weeks. We don't need to do it weekly and stuff. I think we should spend the time and make sure our eyes are dotted. We had problems with the Conservation Fund. We have other funds, money going out and stuff. We'll make sure it's reimbursed, we don't run into future problems. I don't see the hurry. Most agencies, every two week, it's paid, paid, paid schedules. I don't know why we are different. And being a Yankee, I will not do electronic signatures. Thank you.
Okay, TA McGyver, do you wish to speak to the two-week turnaround on, pardon me, on a payables manifest?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. At this point, I absolutely would continue to advocate for paying our bills on a weekly basis. I think it's an excellent thing that we can offer our vendors to make sure that we can get a check in the mail shortly after services are rendered or products are received. I, as we discussed with electronic time and attendance, I'd be happy at some point in the future to entertain going to bi-weekly payroll. I think there's operational efficiencies that would exist with a bi-weekly payroll system. At that time, I would still advocate for processing our accounts payable on a weekly basis. Again, I think being able to produce a check run every week, make sure that we can get people paid. There's a lot of approval steps that come in some of the bills that we have to pay. And they have to get coded by departments. Sometimes they get, have to get coded by additional boards or commissions before they get to the finance office to be processed. And so it can be a couple-week turnaround, even with producing checks, a check run every week. And I think it's important to continue offering a weekly check run. If you'd like any specific information to support that, I'd be happy to compile it. But at this time, I would absolutely continue to advocate for a weekly pay run, both payroll and accounts payable.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Does anyone else have comments, questions, or concerns about the two-week turnaround on payables? Okay, seeing as there are none, I'm going to move on to the Police Department's surplus equipment disposal. Is Chief Joy still with us?
Yes.
I'm still here.
Okay, and so Chief Joy has put together something for the board where he's asking us to consider authorization of disposable of surplus equipment in trade for proposed new needed equipment. Chief Joy, would you like to speak to that?
Yep, so I don't know if you all got the email that I sent to TA McGyver. Essentially, in speaking with the firearms instructors, Deputy Chief Brooks, Detective Obie- in speaking with the firearms instructors, Deputy Chief Brooks, Detective Obie, and Officer Scott Young, it was decided that we would move away from the possession slash use of shotguns in the armory. There's a variety of reasons for that. I'm not going to waste everybody's time with the whys and wherefore's, but we are going to go away from shotguns. Currently, all the officers are issued individual patrol carbines. It fills the function of everything that the police shotgun used to in the old days. It does it better. It does it more safely in a number of issues. So currently, we have three Mossberg 500s in the inventory that were bought back in 2014, as well as one extra quote-unquote AR, which is a lower-end patrol carbine, and a number of cases of shock and ammunition. We had Renaissance come in, look everything over, and you could see the attached quote. We're going to switch the, trade them for streamlights to go on patrol carbines. So what you have in front of you essentially shows the trade for the ammunition shotguns and Olympic arms AR for the streamlights to go on to the ARs for the officers to increase their effectiveness in the low light situations.
Any select person questions, comments, concerns, ideas about this?
I'd like to speak up.
Go ahead, Jim.
I would like to see if we go back to Renaissance because I actually spoke to Chief Joy earlier today. And this quote was done pre-COVID. And as somebody who is also into firearms, has seen the ammunition go out of sight. Not that we're looking to price gouge, but I mean, even if we can get a couple more extra dollars and that helps us out a little bit more, I mean, I think that might be something that is worth revisiting.
Are you comfortable with that, Chief Joy?
I certainly am. This was obviously docketed for you folks prior to. I have no problem going back. If you want me to get extra quotes, I can do that as well, or I can stay right with Renaissance and go that direction. I'm happy to work at the behest of the board.
Yeah, no, I think Renaissance is the, you know, they're local and, you know, we take care of our own here in Barrington.
And that's exactly why I went that route.
And but if they could do a little bit more and we get a little bit more out of it, because I mean, I think that, you know, we're going to be doing some training there when the range is built. And, you know, if they can give us a little bit more, because I would like to see this get voted in either way. But with your discretion, if you can go back, be like, hey, can you guys, you know, since we have, it was 73 boxes and you have some cases open, some cases not open, which we don't have a round number on, but I mean, law enforcement, you know, 12 gauge, I mean, that's going to cost a pretty penny, so.
Okay, so.
I don't disagree.
Select person Sakosha's suggestion, what we could do is make a motion to authorize the considered disposal and authorize Chief Joy to negotiate a price of 908 or higher. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Air, air, I'm not.
You're not? Go ahead, select person air.
Why?
And Andy had a comment as well, Tracy.
Can we add to the motion? Do we have to get three bids on this? Waive the bid proceeding right to one person.
So I can answer that question. So the disposal policy is clear as mud. It's one of the policies I look forward to updating in this situation. So generally, practice, it isn't in our disposal policy, but practice would be to put something over $1,000 out to bid, advertise and dispose of it that way. The unique circumstances in this case are the Police Department will not be disposing of used firearms to anybody other than an FFL and putting them, even getting them outside of the community. The town has a trusted partner in Renaissance Firearms. And the, so if there was a policy, it would say bids and we would be looking for a waiver of that disposal policy to do it this way. The policy doesn't really address a circumstance like this, but the recommendation is to go directly with somebody the Police Department feels comfortable offloading this equipment to. There might be another option or two of a business that the Police Department could approach. But again, the Renaissance is a good partner for the town. And as long as we're getting a fair price, I think that's what's most important in the town's interest.
Select person air, go ahead.
I'll second Jim's motion.
Well, and I think select person Knapp or Vice Chair Knapp had something he wanted to weigh on. Am I correct? I can't see him.
Yes, I do have a comment on it. And it's, I agree that Rent Arms is a good partner here in town. And I think it would be a moot point to quote it now that the number is public, but 2A Tactical, who routinely donates two ARs to the Police Department, is also in Barrington and is another firm who I would hope we're probably pretty comfortable with. So looking at other people in town that we probably should consider for things like this.
To be honest, I completely forgot.
Did reach out to 2A and just with the, I guess I'm going to use the term insanity of what has popped up with the businesses, they just never connected. So we did reach out, just never kind of hitched horses.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion to consider the authorization of the disposal of the above-listed surplus equipment at a value of 908 or greater?
Sakosha, aye.
Okay, and a second?
Air.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Roll call vote beginning with select person air, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardakoff, aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Select, TA McGyver, do you have anything before the select persons reports?
No, thank you for asking.
So select person Sakosha, under the understanding you haven't attended or been assigned any committees yet, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're going to move on. Select person air, reports, please.
Well, I didn't know I attend the conservation, but I gathered information. So the thing that came up earlier about the grant, they did it last minute. And then they did a letter to the planning board on the town hall and everything. And then this general business signs.
Okay, select person.
Land.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
On the Town's Land Committee, they have not formally met, but they have been working with the town administrator. And the forester has completed all the work in town. They did meet with him. And then I'm sure the town administrator will forward you all the information on that, or he already did. He's a very efficient person.
Okay. Select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. The CBA is going to meet Wednesday. There's, right now, there's four items on the agenda. The next item is on the library. I have not been to a library meeting, but if you look on there, they have Storytime, which they have online for mothers to turn around and tune in and have, I don't listen to Storytime, but I've been told that the Storytime has been worked out really, really well with the youngsters, as the TA has noted to me on several occasions. And so it's a, it's a good program, so I just make that available to the listeners so they can pick up on it by going to the library site and go from there.
Wonderful. I actually watched Ms. Wendy do a story hour. It was absolutely adorable. I didn't stay for the whole thing, but she starts with a song with the kids and she just, she did a great job engaging kids in a remote capacity. I thought it was wonderful. So select person Knapp, Vice Chair Knapp, report out.
Yep. So I was not at the planning board meeting this past week because two of the items were direct at conflict for me. And I'm looking right now at the agenda that they had, one of them being a request for applicant for the proposed site for a gravel access parking area with a proposed barn and greenhouse. And this is the DWS X2 Holdings LLC, which is the Beauty Hill Road for Wildlife Encounters. The other one, or the, another one that was on there was the expansion of the Barrington Shores Campground. And there were a handful of letters that were submitted in reference to that. And then there was the application or the request for applicant for site review with a 9.6 for the new town hall, which as I said, I would not have been able to sit for anyway. And then there was a design review as well for a request for, a request by the applicant for design review to subdivide and leave eight acres for the owner and 21 acres to be developed into multifamily development in the municipal, in the village district along Franklin Highway, Route 9. And there were several letters that were submitted around that as well. That is, that's the review from the planning board.
Very good. So report out for, I participated in one of two meetings with the Recreation Commission as they began discussion of how to handle projects potentially while the town gym was available, causing the least amount of disruption. And right now, many staff members are preparing for when our self-selected quarantines to keep everyone well have been put to rest. And they're preparing for summer camp and they're gathering all sorts of ideas for arts and crafts and ways to keep kids busy, which I am absolutely sure the parents who have been homeschooling are going to appreciate to the nth degree. I did want to, if it's okay and you will humor me, I wanted to make three quick public service announcements. As the town of Barrington is amazing about taking care of its own, if you have the capacity to donate to the food pantry, either canned items or funds to help, we're going to be entering a period of time where our fellow townspeople are going to be experiencing some unprecedented challenges financially. And having that food pantry available to the people in our community we care about is very important. The same is also true of then 68 Hours of Hunger for our school age kids. There's a lot of families right now receiving, you know, decreased income and maybe no unemployment. So I think it becomes very important as a community that we help. If you're a senior here in Barrington and you do not necessarily have earned income, but receive most of your income from Social Security or have not filed your taxes with the IRS out of, you know, no necessity to for the past couple of years, you can still receive stimulus funds if you go to IRS.gov and you find the link to apply for them. They can be sent directly in a check to your home. And I think that's very important for our senior members of our town to know as well. And thank you for humoring me through those public service announcements all. This is our last section of the meeting for public comment. It is limited to 15 minutes, three minutes per person. And as we did before, we certainly appreciate anyone willing to stand by and wait for our meeting and talk through things. It is difficult because I can only see four screens at a time, but I'm going to recognize a couple of select people during public comment. And then I'll ask, please, 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 use your chat button in your upper left-hand corner of this meeting if you're participating remotely and tell us that you're there so that we can hold the meeting and allow your voice to be heard, please. Go ahead, select person air.
As a citizen, I'm making it part of my report, I've been watching the news and the state is issuing fines for parking at the beach. Now Route 1, they shut it off. I've noticed a lot of cars on Route 9 and 125 at the trails and stuff, and then on private roads. So you literally have to park on town roads and state roads. So if someone gets a ticket, don't be surprised. And then with the epidemic and stuff, on they're advising people not going to advanced hikes and stuff and get lost or injured, they don't have the staff to rescue people. And they can charge you for that. The state, it's all on the iPhone, and just keep a heads up, be aware.
Well, there is also a hiker card that you can purchase from the state. I think it's like 23 bucks.
I can't see. Is that select person Sakosha?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I've lost my video.
Oh, okay. So, so there's a support card that people can purchase in order to insure, it's almost like a little insurance policy.
Correct.
Okay, good to know. Select person Bailey, you had public comment, please.
I did. Thank you very much. One of the items that this new care program has, it has a section where the schools, if we know anybody in the schools, we can tell them there's two sections on there that will help supplement the individuals that are going around bringing lunches to everybody, but it must, and also the two sections. One has 14-point something billion dollars nationwide, and the other has eight-point something. And both of these take care of the underprivileged that can't have lunches and what have you. And it allows the school to have extra money to continue to provide this and also use the taxpayers' money. So if they were to do that, it would work out well. And there's also a section in there that allows the food banks to turn around and request money, which is a grant, to turn around and provide the food for that. So that's something else to add to what you was doing, Tracy.
Excellent. Good. I know Rick Walker wrote to us in the comments section. Rick, you had public comment.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to piggyback on your comment about the food pantry. It's been very amazing to me. We continue to use the Public Safety Building as a viable location for people to drop donations off anytime that they're going by. We bring it right up to the food pantry that day and get it either put on a table or a refrigerator, freezer, whatever the case is. And it's amazing to me that the outpouring of support in the form of groceries, gift cards, we've had people come in with checks that we get right up there to them. So I want to piggyback on that with you, that, you know, the food pantry and then 68 Hours of Hunger are something that's special to me. I enjoy helping, being able to help them. And I really appreciate all the efforts that the taxpayers and people have stepped up to help their neighbors. So and piggybacking on that, the other thing is I would like to shout out to my firefighters and EMTs. They've stepped up. We've been really busy. Thankfully, not with COVID calls, but we've been busy. It's been, we're somewhere around 225 ambulance calls this year and about 135 fire calls. Been busy. The guys and gals have stepped up and made sure that when the town needed them, they were there. So that's just a shout out to them people for continuing their efforts as they, as they work through this pandemic and try to take care of their families and their neighbors.
Yep, excellent. Thank you. Any, any other public comments? I can't see people. So your opportunity is to let me know you're there?
Yeah, I have a comment. Can you hear me?
Yeah, could you say your name?
My name is Jeff Trog.
Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm actually the sales rep from R&amp;D Paving.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I'd start by saying that it was a pleasure to work for the town last year. It was a tough transition year because there was no technical road agent or superintendent, but it was a pleasure working along the fire chief and Aaron with the DPW. And I just wanted to comment on a couple comments that were made. The first point being the water truck, that is where we were told to get water by the Department of Public Works at the boat ramp. I do believe the tires were touching the water. We didn't back the actual trailer into the water. I mean, the rear tires of the trailer were touching just as a boat would. We had to back it in a little bit so that the hose would reach the water. And I just wanted to comment on that, that, you know, that was where we were told by the Department of Public Works to get water. There was no paving of driveways while we were in town. It was a small apron that we did for hatches. And the reason we did it is because they let us park our equipment there for the full weekend. And we did check with the Department of Public Works before we did it. And they did also pay for the apron. I'm pretty sure I'm the only contractor that meets with the road agent every single year to look at the roads. In fact, the road agent this year called me for advice on Commerce Way, and my advice was the suggestion that was put out to bid. was the suggestion that was put out to bid. So I actually literally helped to write the bid, and then my, I'm just upset that my bid was thrown out, being the fact that I was literally called in to help write the bid. We've paved for four of the last six years in Barrington, had no issues except for this past year for some reason. All the issues that were brought up were addressed and checked by the town hired engineer, Scott Borseer from DuBois and King. And every single issue passed with flying colors. There's a small area holding water on, I believe it was Winter Green, that was checked. We were going to go grind it out and fix it, and we were told by the road agent that he did not want to have extra joints there, and it was not a major issue, so he felt more comfortable leaving it as is. As far as the shoulder gravel, because that was brought up. We do also have a shoulder gravel machine a number of years ago when we did do work for the town. We were told that it was very expensive when Advance did it, and the road agent preferred to do it themselves. One selectman spoke very highly of Pike Industries. I just wanted you guys to know that R&amp;D Paving is Pike's largest customer in all of New England for the last five of the six years. We're also Pike's largest subcontractor in New England. We do various highway work for them, town work, do tier one, tier two paving, night paving. We pay for approximately 25 towns this year, and honestly, Barrington was pretty much the only town that we had any issues in. It was very upsetting to be represented in this way this evening. We're very strict on our ethics. We take a lot of pride in our work, and we've also had great relationship with the town in Barrington and have always worked very hard to supply a competitive bid and do great work for the town. And it's, to be honest with you, it's just upsetting that you guys chose to spend $20,000 more, considering how much time and effort that we do put in when you guys put out bids. You guys chose as a town to spend $20,000 more.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna thank you for your comments because I thought they were very thoughtful and I appreciated your response to them, but I did allow you to go over the three minutes to about three and a half minutes. I do appreciate what you said. I have recorded that information. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes. Any other public comments?
George Joy has a public comment.
Go ahead, George.
Just like Rick, I'd like to give a thank you. ATEC Designs out of Dover, New Hampshire. The head is Carl R. Leising, and I probably butchered his last name as well. ATEC is now manufacturing face shields and other PPE. They were kind enough to donate 25 face shields because they knew that the police fire and EMS needed those items. I offered to order, and they were very clear that they were donating to local EMS services in the area. So we picked those up Friday, we'll get those distributed, but I am very thankful it was ATEC Designs out of Dover. Rick also got a donation, I'm not jumping on Rick's bandwagon, got a donation of N95 replacement mass as well, and a lot of the members of the community have been coming forward with PPE for us too. So thank you to everybody. I just did want to throw that out there. It allows us to do our job.
It, it always amazes me, you know, Mr. Rogers said, "Look for the helpers in times of crisis." And so in this pandemic moment, I've chosen, and I hope you'll all choose to look for the helpers because there's a lot of good happening. Any other public comments? I think we have room for one more.
So just wanted to make sure it was clear. Anybody participating on a computer, if you're muted, just click your microphone button to unmute yourself. If you're participating over the phone, you need to press star six to unmute your phone. The mute button on your physical phone isn't what unmutes you for this conference call. You have to press star six. So we'll give folks an opportunity to unmute themselves if they have anything to offer.
Yeah, I'll give it 30 seconds as I did last time, and if, and we have spot for one more in that 30 seconds, which will put us at the 15 minutes.
I'm not seeing anybody come off mute, and I recognize most of the folks on the call, so.
Very good. Well, I think we can conclude our meeting, and thank you all. This was a pretty successful way, and I think we moved through a lot of material very quickly.
I agree.
Take care. I'll be well.
I motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I made the motion.
Okay. And, and a second by who?
Air.
By air. Starting with air, roll call vote, please.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Nap, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Be well, folks.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.